...for our first meeting, which is hardly even June. Here we are. And according to South Carolina Freedom Information Act, Section thirty-four eighty-e, South Carolina Code nineteen eighty-seven is amended on the meeting in the immediate area to notify the date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. This time we have our prayer line. This is the Go-Command.
Goodness, Father, as the young do we come to say thank you. We ask God that you allow us to conduct this meeting in respectful and humble way. While we ask that you give us the wisdom, the understanding to make the decision that in the best interest of our children and citizens of Darlington County, we ask that at the end that you allow us to have traveling verses and return to our respective place of living. This we asking your name. Amen.
Now, Sam, with wings, let me just have it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are now asked for approval of the agenda. See, I'll move the agenda again. Second, discussion. All in favor of approval of the agenda? No. As have it. Citizens' comments. Do we have anyone signed up? Okay, before we go to that part of the agenda. Do know to consent items minutes for May ninth, two thousand twenty-two, and minutes for May forty-third, two thousand twenty-two. Please accept vote.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion on that? Are you in all in favor of the motion to approve? Aye. No. As have it. Okay, moving on to honors, awards, and recognitions. We have a number of awards to give out tonight. Mr. Johnson is going to handle this.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. It's always an honor to recognize our student athletes that have done a tremendous job this particular year. I have eight student athletes that we're going to recognize. As I call your name, could you please come forward? As I call your name, please come forward. First, we have the South Carolina Coaches Association of Women's Sports, two thousand twenty-two North-South All-Star Softball Team, as well as four A All-State Softball Team. And they are Ashton Goodwin from Darlington High School. And Alyssa Poston from Hartsville High School. And they're receiving two awards because they have All-State and an intermediate All-Star team as well. Congratulations, y'all. Next, we have baseball. And we have basically we have Coach Frankie Humphreys.
The track.
For track, I'm sorry, track. Coach Frankie Humphreys and Coach Callebreed in support as well. For track, we have four athletes from Hartsville High School. And they are Demarion Coe, twenty-twenty-two All-State Boys four-by-one-hundred relay. We have Justin Canti, twenty-twenty-two All-State Boys four-by-one-hundred relay. We have Hakeem Waters, twenty-twenty-two All-State Boys four-by-one-hundred relay. And Jonathan Lemmster, who is also four A Boys, four by one-hundred relay, as well as the four-hundred meter dash. And Jonathan is receiving two awards. He does All-State and. And they are state champions in the four-by-one-hundred relay. Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have baseball. The South Carolina Baseball Coaches Association, North-South All-Star Baseball Team, as well as the four A All-State Baseball Team, and that's Cam Cannarella, Hartsville High School. Last but not least, we have the twenty-twenty-two North-South All-Star Girls Basketball Team and Summer Joseph, Darlington High School. And next, thank you all. Thank to all our student athletes as well as their parents. We certainly understand if y'all dismiss. Thank you for being here with us tonight. We don't want to hold up dinner.
Give another round of applause. Congratulations. Coach. Who did you suggest there for?
Marianne.
The chairman. Okay, moving on. Reports and administrative presentations. This is really board information and public information. The Darlington County Board of Education retrieved the schedule for Friday, June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two at nine a.m. in the room number three.
Yes, that's correct.
And there will be a special call meeting on Thursday, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two at six p.m. in the board training room, which will be here. And that will be specifically for the budget.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, moving on. Policy items. Budget report and federal funds report. She changing on me. Okay, the next Darlington County Regular Board Meeting with a schedule for July eleventh, two thousand twenty-two at six p.m. in the board training room, right here in Darlington. Pleasure reports and federal funds reports. Mr. Nate, anything on that?
Business as usual.
Business as usual. Any questions? Anyone on that? The budget. We will discuss that in length on a Friday also. Moving on to policy items. Policy J F A B, admission of non-resident students. This is for first reading. Discussion on that. Is there a written one? We shouldn't take off two. We can take all. You can take both of them once if you like.
I'd make a motion to be accept all two.
Two man and then exhibit.
J F A B, J F A, J F A B C and J F A B C E. Right?
Right.
Okay, that's your motion.
My motion.
Second. Discussion on that.
Can you explain the tuitions? I mean, what the tuition situation is for non-residents?
So, that's something that can be updated periodically.
Right.
But at this point in time, I believe the last time we actually had this, it was six hundred dollars in the school district for the tuition piece for people coming from out of district.
Any questions? All in favor of the motion for first reading?
Wait, I didn't hear the intro.
I'm sorry.
What is the tuition?
Six hundred dollars.
Six hundred dollars total?
People coming from out of district into us at this point.
Okay.
That was the last time we actually had it. Now, that can be updated on an annual basis too.
Okay.
That's what the policy talks about.
And then we get the full people all that?
That's correct.
Okay. Just double check.
So, answer my question. I would add about the way he follows the child so that he gets the full people.
Yes.
Any other questions? Anyone all in favor of the motion to accept both policies?
Aye.
No. As have it. Moving on to action items. Two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, Darlington County School District Calendar Revision. Ms. Audrey, if you want to address that or.
Well, so, we had a little bit of change. Of course, as the board knows, for the past two years, we've been able to use an e-learning day on election day in November. And of course, there was a general election two years ago that we were able to do this with. And then last year, for regular election, primary elections, we were able to utilize that as well. We built our twenty-two, twenty-three calendar with an e-learning day in first semester, which is November eighth. And then we were contacted by the State Department about a week and a half ago saying that we would not be allowed to use that day as an e-learning day because it is intended for emergencies only. So, of course, they had six months to tell us that. Unfortunately, they told us that a week and a half ago. So, unfortunately, they are asking us to make that change. So, what we decided is, is that we know that one day, especially the one day we're proposing, will affect parents because there was a P D day originally on August nineteenth where students would not be in school, but employees would be, and teachers and schools would be open on that day as a P D day. What we're proposing is removing that, making that a school day, and then November eighth is actually a holiday, which is what the state is requiring us to do, is to make that a holiday. So, we're flip-flopping, you know. The eighth becomes a holiday instead of an e-learning day. The nineteenth of August becomes a regular school day. We maintain our ninety days in first semester. We still end first semester on December sixteenth. And so, we keep everything set there. What that means is, is that we'll have a P D day that we have to make up in second semester. And so, we'd like to approve this change because it will affect the nineteenth of August, so parents know that that'll be a school day. And then we'd like to send out some possibilities for the P D for second semester, once our teachers and staff are back in the schools the last week of July. And so, for example, it could be as simple as January second becomes a P D day instead of a holiday. That would take care of that. We could also utilize the week in February and have one of those days as a P D day, or we can just add a P D day at the end of the year. But, you know, the plan will be to poll our teachers and our staff, once they get into buildings, to get some feedback from them on when they would prefer that P D day. But I think it's important for us to vote on first semester now because August nineteenth is impacted for parents and students.
Questions, anyone?
Chairman, I've moved that we accept the recommendation to revise the schedule.
First semester.
The first semester.
Second.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Not really a discussion pertaining to voting the vote, but just curious, just record-keeping and tracking. How would they know whether you're an e-learning day or whether you were in class?
Interestingly enough, you have to submit your calendars. To the State Department and Power School is how they track how many days students are in school. And so, you have to have a hundred and eighty days for students in school, and that is all monitored at the state level. So, we had to submit our calendar. They're just now getting around to looking at our calendar and realizing that that is not what they deem a school day because of Power School and having to set it up that way.
But e-learning is being a. But the point is, how do they know you're here and not home?
Because we.
Other than you telling them.
Yep, correct.
No, I'm saying.
Yes. You are correct. Yes. Yes.
And it was intended to accommodate certain situations, to get the most out of it.
Yes.
And they're making you jump through hoops, like you say. They wait six months to tell you. They don't do it. So, what's the difference, people? Okay.
We've done this for two years in a row, I believe.
We have.
Yeah. Okay, sorry. I may interrupt the vote.
That's a fair statement.
Okay. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
No. As have it. Okay, moving to audit services for finance and procurement.
Ms. Douglas.
For Webster Rogers. Ms. Douglas?
Yep. It was a year to put out our audit services for bid. We did it a little bit differently. That dollar amount includes five years of the audit, but it also includes our procurement audit, which is usually done separately. We're required by the state to do a procurement, have a procurement audit done every three years, and this year is the end of our three-year period. So, we ask all bidders to bid on doing this three-year period and then doing the procurement audit annually along with the audit because that way, if something's wrong, then you know it. I mean, it's rather than waiting and catching it in three years. It's just easier to do them both together. A lot of districts have chosen. A lot of districts have chosen to do that, so the, you know, it was very close. Um, we only had three bidders, but they were all pretty strong, and, um, we went through the process, committee met and went through everything. Um, Webster Rogers is the current, they're, they're already doing our audit. Um, it's, it'll be a different person as the league, because the person that did ours last year retired, so we'll still be getting a new audit team, but we'll have the added advantage that they have on work papers already. There'll be a lot, there's advantages to having new people and there's disadvantages and, and, you know, one of the things, you spend a lot of legwork, them getting up to speed on how we do things in our systems, and their organization already knows that. Um, but it'll, it'll still be a new team for us. And it'll, it'll be, with all the new paperwork and all the extra hoops we've had to jump through, it'll be interesting, but, um.
Question?
Is, is there any reason why, or any rule that says that we have to periodically change auditing firms?
No, sir, we just have to put it out for bids. Uh, most of these people, the, the people that they've audited, a lot of them have been doing the same audits for twenty-five, thirty years. Webster does have a presence in Florence. Um, the other two, the closest, um, the Malden and Greenble were the closest offices. They've listed Somerville, but they have offices in Florence, Somerville, um, I don't remember all the locations, but they've got several locations.
I think one, one point to add to that, too, is that the state has now required auditing firms to be approved at the state level. So, whereas in the past, you could have various firms, now the state, one of the requirements in some of the new legislation that they've put out.
Yeah.
Is that you have to, you have to use an auditing company that is on their state-approved list. Now, luckily, all three of the people that we had submit proposals are on the list, but that's something brand new this year. In fact, it's something brand new over the past couple of months that they just initiated.
Yeah, they just, they, they initiated it, like some people already have their audit firm in place and they're scrambling to, and if they're not on the list, they can't use them, so it's, it's very bizarre, but anyway.
What was the increase, what, what's the increased cost for doing a procurement every year?
Procurement, it, it really wasn't, it's, it's about five, six thousand dollars. I can't remember the breakdown. I'd have to pull it individually. We usually pay anywhere from six to eight thousand every three years, and it, doing it every year, it didn't add any cost. It's just, they do the paperwork once instead of doing massive, um, it's actually a lot less work because they pull a lot of the same procurement stuff or the audit, um, for the regular audit, too, so.
So, this figures for three years, you say?
Five.
Five years?
Five years. And we have the option each year that we can cancel it. We don't have to stick with them, but we are not obligated to put it out for bids if we don't want to. So, if we, you know, if we were dissatisfied, we can, we can get out of it. It's not a contract, but.
All right, I'm going to entertain a motion for approval.
I'm going to definitely approve it.
Motion?
Say.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the, uh, Webster Rogers?
Aye.
So, I have it. Okay, moving on, Dartmouth County School District, model twenty-twenty-one School District Procurement
So, Chairman Jeffords, members of the board and the audience, we've been discussing procurement code, uh, limits for probably four years since, since I've been here. Um, and again, just a, a refresher that districts over a certain size have to go by certain state code when it comes to procurement. Um, and so, we, we obviously ha- have been abiding by that, but we haven't really changed the thresholds in our particular procurement code, uh, in years. And, and so, you know, for, for example, if you look at the cost of, um, buying a piece of plywood today versus what it was twenty years ago, it's significantly different. Um, and so, the thresholds that we had really started becoming more of a, of a paperwork and, and red tape bottleneck. Um, so, so things that made sense twenty years ago to put out for bid or quotes, now all of a sudden, we, we've been running into this ceiling over and over and over and over. So, again, we, we looked at the, the state code that.
The state, the state updated their code.
Updated it, yep.
And we can't. We have to modify our code, send it to them for approval, and we did, and we got it back in record time. It's amazing. Um, and basically what this says is, we're now, when Mr. Johnson wants to buy something, um, for operations and it's under twenty, it was over twenty-five hundred dollars, you had to get, um, bids. You had to get, get quotes for, I mean, and you can't hardly buy anything for twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, anything over ten thousand, between ten and fifty, you had to get three formal bids, so you actually had to go through the bid process. And anything over that threshold, you, you would have to do the, um, RFPs and RFQs that we put out. The state changed their threshold to, you don't have to have any competition if it's less than ten thousand dollars. And then between ten and twenty-five, you can get three quotes, like, you know, get three emails from people quoting, it doesn't have to be formal. And then anything over twenty-five up to a hundred thousand, it has to be actual written bids. Um, so it, it really, um, I mean, there are a lot of things that we buy that hit that ten thousand dollars, and it's a lot of paperwork. Um, but the state has changed their code. We got ours approved and, and Ms. Johnson, um, went through and she's highlighted and read all of the changes, and this is the synopsis. You can read the whole seventy-five, eighty-page document if you'd like to. It's, it's, anyway, interesting. Um, and then the next piece of the action will be on the exemptions. Um, and our exemption code for the district has not been updated in a very long time. So, these are standard exemptions that most districts have in place. Um, we're, you know, we don't have to follow the procurement rules and certain guidelines, but the state has approved all of these, so. It's a, it's a, a lot, it'll, it'll help us with paperwork. Um, we still have to do the bidding and we still look for competitive bids, but having to do so for twenty-five hundred dollars is, the way things cost now is, causes us a lot more.
We'll buy much for twenty-five hundred dollars, that's for sure. Okay, so we could, we could take both of these at one time, I believe.
And we're required to, to file the state procurement because we have over seventy-five million dollars in revenues. I know a lot of times I hear, well, this district, that district didn't have to do that. I could just go out and hire who I wanted to, and a lot of smaller districts don't. But it, once you hit the seventy-five million dollar threshold, you're there, whether you don't get it every year or not, once you get it, you're there and you have to follow the state procurement laws.
What, what then protects, um, us, I guess, from people saying that you, um, didn't allow them the opportunity to, to bid, you understand what I'm saying? Because, um, whether it was because they were minority or whether they were, because they, um, were local and they just felt they didn't get an opportunity? Does that have, does that have, is there protection even there for that?
It's totally separate situation. This only has to do with dollar thresholds that you, that are required to have. So, this is strictly about the dollar amounts, has nothing to do with qualifications of people who would actually bid.
So, they still have to qualify?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve C and D.
Second.
Second, uh, Charles, any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve, uh, C and D on procurement? Aye. Aye. I have it. Moving on, superintendent's update.
Try to keep us moving. All right, um, the first thing I wanted to, um, mention to the board is that we, I had our first online early registration that we've done in this school district. Um, and, you know, by all accounts, it, we, we had a really good response to it. So, we had, uh, approximately two-thirds of our returning students have already registered for next year. Um, if you recall, normally when we do registration, we do it for two weeks right before the start of school. There's a big bottleneck in the buildings, there's wait lines, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Last year, we actually, uh, uh, the year before, we started some online, and then last year, we went to online format, which helped a lot with the bottlenecks, especially at the elementary and middle levels. Um, and this year, we actually implemented this early registration period, and the reason why we did this is to help out with transportation and food service well in advance, as well as scheduling for students, uh, in the schools, uh, especially the elementary and middle schools. So, you know, it was great to see that we've already gotten two-thirds of our students taken care of, um, and transportation is able to start, you know, getting that, those routes and the students taken care of for that, food service as well. Um, so, but it also brought to light, uh, a new dilemma, which is, what about the third that hasn't registered? Uh, and so, when will they be able to do this? So, again, we're going to offer a makeup registration timeframe, uh, which will be in July, um, and it will actually run from the seventeenth, uh, which is, uh, the seventeenth of July through the twenty-fourth of July. We'll make that very well-known. We will publicize it. Um, so, it's a makeup registration in order to capture those other, third of the students that were waiting to get registered. And again, if, if students are not registered by the first day of school, they cannot attend school. They will have to wait. Um, they, they will not be able to come to school that morning. They'll have to come after school to register at, with the school staff because, um, we won't be able to do that in the morning of the first day of school. So, again, we, we've publicized and publicized and publicized, but it is new. It, this is new for the school district. Um, so, we certainly want to give everybody the opportunity, uh, they can to get registered. We feel like by, um, offering this makeup period, that that will give us enough time to set bus routes as well for those students that were, um, that will be registering as well as food service. And again, for any, uh, new students that move into the district between now, um, and that date, uh, that's when they'll be able to register as well. So, anybody new that moves into the district. Uh, so, just wanted to update the board on that and, yeah.
Kids not have their iPads or their laptops over summer? Those are turned back in or not?
They are not. They are, the students have those.
So, parents have online access?
They do.
Okay, because I, I didn't want that to be the barrier.
That's, and, and I'm glad you asked that question because we actually are working on for that same timeframe when we, when we open this back up, um, to set up some compu- some community, uh, possible. We're talking to some of our local churches, uh, that will be able to help as well. So, we want to kind of blast this out and then also have some locations where people can bring their device with them to those locations and we'll have some help with it to be able to register as well.
Or, um, like we did during COVID when we shut everything down, had the buses go out with Wi-Fi on board?
Yep, yep. So, we want to, we want to give, make sure there's access, but, but also other places just beside school. It may be as simple as working the, the application on the iPad, right? They may not have a question about registration. It may be a technical question that we.
Are fees paid online?
They are, they are.
Would credit card, is that, is that limit some people?
It, it does as far as, uh, it is, you know, you pay online with a credit card, so some folks will have to pay in person. And they can do that at school. That is.
But if they're registered, we're not going to let the fees hold them up from, so maybe we need to get that information out, too, that the fees would not hold you up from at least registering.
Absolutely.
Have we, have we reached out to our public libraries as, as sites?
We, we certainly can do that, too. Like I said, this is.
Since, since all sites have public libraries?
Yes, yes.
I mean, they're central locations.
Yep, yep. So, we'll, we'll certainly reach out, uh, to the library system, and like I said, our local churches are, are wanting to do that, reach out to their families as well. And, um, so, the other information, we, um, Renee, was it Thursday or Friday that we got word about?
Friday.
I think it was Friday, late, that, uh.
It's always Friday.
That they had met and made some progress on the budget. Um, and I think before I told you that there was, uh, oranges, apples and plums, and we now have grapes. So, we have a fourth, um, type of budget that I don't think any of us saw coming. Um, so, they have taken pieces of the Senate and pieces of the House and, and put it together in what they're going to present to the full committees, I guess, um, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
The fifteenth. Now, again, things could change on Wednesday, so, you know, we've, we've got grapes, we may have apricots, I don't know. Um, but, but it is a combination that none of us put together before. Um, so, it's interesting because, uh, you know, the, the, they're, they're looking at the House version for the teacher salary raise, but also for how they're distributing the money, which is completely with the new funding, uh, you know, formula that, that they have. And so, I thought that was interesting. I also thought it was interesting that from, from the tax, um, cut and rebate, that they took the House version, which is more conservative, to where they go down from seven percent to six and a half percent. Uh, and then also, I think in businesses, go from nine percent to six percent, if I'm not mistaken, manufacturing businesses go from nine percent to six percent. Anyways, it's more of a stepped instead of one fell swoop, and also it's based on the economy. So, if the economy is not doing well, in the Senate version, there was still a, a steep tax cut, but in the House version, if the economy's not doing well, there's not a tax cut, so.
I, I saw something where Molly Sverman was, um, proposing additional money for, for school construction.
She did.
For, for school district?
Yes.
School district?
Yes.
And I'm wondering if the conference committee, because that's what you're talking about, is going to be meeting on ways, if they're going to incorporate that plan into their conference committee, because that, that may also change the budget.
Yeah, and, and of course, those are, those are different monies.
I, I know.
Those are capital monies, uh, versus the reoccurring general fund monies. But to your point, they, she did, uh, distribute extra money that was available to them, um, and there were some clear winners in that process. Uh, we did not receive any of those monies. Um, so, I, I'll let you take a look at the list.
I thought we would.
And see who got the monies in, you know, but, uh, we, we did not, uh, receive any of those monies. But, um, it's going to be interesting because, again, I, I don't think anybody saw how this would be coupled together in the way they put it together, and it could change again on Wednesday. Now, they, they say they don't think it will, but they also never thought that it would come together in the way that it just did. So, um, uh, we hope to have more information at the retreat. Um, that, it also requires that the state recalculates every single school district's monies that they would receive in this new way. It's never been calculated before, so they're having to do that, and we're waiting on that. So, we really can't, we don't know what this looks like for us. We don't know if it's extra money, if it is extra money, how much extra is it? We're still waiting to see that. Um, and then we can bring some concrete information to, to you as a board to say, here is the differences versus the first budget that we passed. Again, I'm glad we've waited until the end of the month to actually do the special call meeting because a lot of people already did their second readings on their budgets based off the Senate version, and now that, that's not what necessarily is in play. So, we've got time to make adjustments and to react to it, and the board has time, hopefully, getting solid information and make decisions on, um, what we do, whether, you know, with regards to teacher pay, um, as well as the budget itself. whether, you know, with regards to teacher pay, as well as the budget itself we're passing. So stay tuned. The fifteenth will be another day of reckoning, so to speak, to see what we may have. And then whatever comes out of that, we'll give as much to you as we can at the retreat on Friday. And then as, you know, again, as the state, once we get those calculations, we'll get that information out as quick as possible. Our summer feeding programs, again, are being utilized well at the feeding sites that we have. I think, you know, again, I'd sent some information to the board about that. Again, as a reminder, tomorrow is election primaries and our schools are not open for students or staff, other than the cafeteria staff that is thankfully preparing meals for students, because we are getting a lot of those meals out to our community. So pickup for meals is still available tomorrow, but our buildings are closed because they're being used as voting precincts for the primaries that are out tomorrow. As I mentioned in my, my update, if there's a, if there's a runoff, we'll have to address that as well. We won't know that until Wednesday. That'll be information we'll have from the board again at the retreat as well. And then, of course, the last thing is, we're in the midst of planning. The board is a big part of that on, on Friday with the retreat and the discussions that we'll have. Then we have a senior level administrative retreat that we will do in early July. Our principals in service, where we'll be getting, again, more feedback and working to craft the plan for the opening of school. And then, of course, our teachers and our school staff come back the last week of July. And students will start August first, and we'll be back at it. So we're all taking a collective sigh over the past couple of weeks, but it's, it's a short turner at times, so. So we'll continue to work on that. We'll look forward to information at the board retreat on Friday. And that's everything I have for the superintendent's update.
How many kids do we have currently in our summer school program?
Total number, can I get that number for you?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess, are we still? I, I guess, I mean, my, my question is, I know we offer summer school every year, but are we, are we still doing summer school as a, this year with our pandemic money in, in our?
We are.
In, in our code, trying to target our COVID learning loss?
We are. So we opened it up to all students and we're paying for it through S R monies, because we are opening it up to all students. In the past, it was just targeted for, for example, the summer reading camps for third graders that were
Right, right, right.
potentially in danger of being retained. And then our high school and middle school students that had to-
Recover.
Recover, yes, credit recovery. We opened it up to everybody to be able to utilize, especially for-
Are we providing transportation?
We are.
And, and hours for that are?
Eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve, for both elementary and high school.
And high school goes a little bit longer because of the hours and the seat time.
Transportation, pay by state or do we have to pay?
No, we're paying for it. Now, they pay for gas, but we pay for our bus drivers driving the buses, yeah.
Have we had any local resolutions come up with our fuel issues?
It's expensive, so, you know, that's all I can tell you right now. I mean, and, and that's something the state, again, they're, they're looking at passing a budget with fuel that's double the cost of what it was a year ago. So I'm curious to see that explanation. You know, we're, we're not responsible for paying for our fuel, but we are responsible, you know, they're responsible for paying for it, getting it to us, kind of like the issue we ran into at the end of school, where our supplier was selling it to other people because they could make more money. You know, that's got to get closed down. And when we run field trips, for example, you know, there's a cost associated with that, you know, to be able to pay for field trips, so a lot of work to be done.
And we have not had any issues with summer school, we had, so we had this one issue.
Okay.
I guess, one-
One more.
Based off our math testing of kids, did we specifically target kids that we knew were behind, not hitting the mark?
Absolutely.
And weren't going to hit the mark?
That was the first group that we targeted.
And, and, and how much, how many of those students were we able to capture? Because I know this is voluntary.
Yep, it is, and, and it's different for each building and each school. But that, otherwise, that was the group that was targeted first and foremost. And then if there was, if there was enough space, meaning there were adults that could cover more students, that was the criteria. So student, other students can participate, but they couldn't knock a student out that was identified in that lowest quartile in the different schools. And it varies by school as far as who participated and who did not participate.
And was, I'm just doing, I mean, were these, was consultation done with parents of this is, so that we stressed the importance of this?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's, you know, it's a, it's a tough one, because it, you know, it's this fine line between, you know, we really dug in with our students during the school year and we saw some very good gains in the math that you'll see Friday. And so it's a fine line of getting people to continue that with us in the summertime. Versus, I mean, we just had some people say, I gotta take a break. And so even though our, our lowest students can absolutely benefit from it, you know, it's a fine line between, hey, we really need you here because this is going to help you for next year, versus getting them to give up some time in the summer, so. But I, I would tell you, the numbers are better, certainly better than what they would be under our normal summer school guides. Another piece that came up is that in the past, we've charged for credit recovery from high school and middle school. We're not charging that this year, we didn't charge it last year, we're not charging this year. So that certainly should increase numbers of students that are willing to participate.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move on, board member in, foot. This is Boris. It's coming.
David, back to school. I talked with Ms. Malloy, and she is, they are trying to get the back to school event scheduled for July the twenty-eighth at Hartsville High, you know, as they did last year with the drive-through, a drive in and get them. And as soon as they get a clarity as to what we plan to do about some other issues, then I think they can go ahead and decide what they're going to purchase. And also, if there are other entities that plan to have back to school events, somehow, I think we need to get the word to the churches or whatever, so that they'll realize that school is starting on August the first, so that they can plan it early. Because some of them apparently are not aware of the fact that we moved the school date. That's the only thing.
Okay.
I'll save mine for Friday.
Save yours for Friday. Bill?
Just congratulations to the award winners this year.
Yep, congratulations to all award winners. Those guys have to work hard to, they do a lot of training, a lot of hard work. It just, does not just happen, I can assure you. Okay. Ask about vacancies in a minute, but I just want to make sure when we're hiring people, that we are hiring, we're looking at our local people first, make sure that they're qualified, we're going to hire them versus somebody from another district or whatever. More local teachers, administrators we can have in our schools, we're much better off. They've got a more vested interest in our schools. And I think they'll, you know, they'll, they'll be there with us once or the rest of them will be gone. So I, I, that's something we need to emphasize for all our, everyone, principals in particular, they want to do most of the hiring. Vacancies, how are we?
We're at fifty-seven today.
So that's up, right?
It's up, but after contract signing, it was approaching seventy. We recouped some of that. So it's tough out there, but as I was telling Dr. Newman today, we're trying to find some creative ways to get people in our classroom. And to be clear, that, that doesn't mean there's fifty-seven spots where there's no person. We always find a creative way to get a lot of person in that classroom. If nothing else, for supervision, through, we have, try to grow our own through alternate, alternative certification. And it's not ideal, but if we have a math class where we're short a teacher, we, we employ people who may have a degree in math, but they're still considered a vacancy on paper because they don't hold that teaching certification in that area. So it's not, when you hear that fifty-seven number, it's not that there's fifty-seven empty spots. We're, we're looking for people, we have people in there, but they're not the certified folks that we're trying to, you know, that we'd like to get.
Are we still usually using Teach for America?
Certainly, so that's some of the creative ways we're trying to do. We have partnerships with Teach, Teach for America, Teachers of Tomorrow, Carolina CAP. Some of those pools are drying up as well. We have a healthy international teacher program, but we used to be the go-to district for that, but as more and more districts have caught on, that pool is drying up as well. So we finished the year with a ninety-one percent retention rate, which is better than most districts, as I'm hearing from my colleagues. But, you know, I'm not so much worried about this upcoming year as I am twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven. We got to find a way to get more people in the profession.
Okay. We'll definitely have to be creative, whether it's some type of scholarship program or something.
That's right. And we offer that now to help grow our own. So we, we pay for practices for our employees, if they're looking to go into teaching, we pay for coursework. These programs, I admit that you, you brought up Teachers of Tomorrow, Teach for America, PACE, alternative certification programs. If you're a current district employee looking to go into teaching, we, we carry that cost for you, help you get, get where you need to be.
Have we ever, have we ever looked at, I'm just spinning, have we ever looked at going to schools where they're teaching and, you know, we'll pay for your next semester if you come to us, you know? They're in teaching right now, but we'll finish up, we'll pay out your next semester if you come here.
No, it's, you, you got to start thinking that way.
I mean, I know that's crazy, but-
No, it's, it's money well spent.
I mean, you got to get it before they get settled someplace.
You do, and what's interesting too, Monty, is, is that there's more and more scholarships to pay for their education now than there ever has been in the past. There, there used to just be, you know, the, the teaching fellows that we pay. And then they started forgiving some. Now, like, there's money all over the place at this point in time to get people. So we have to start thinking creatively, especially locally, when you look at Francis Mary, you look at Hooker, to find those people that, you know, are in their last semester or last year.
I wouldn't even wait that long, I'd get them before they go into that last senior year. I mean, get them their junior year, you know?
I mean, it's, you got to, you got to literally take on the business approach to, you know, you got to get them as early as you can, because if you don't, there's twenty people standing in line to hire them.
It's funny you say that, that, that last semester is your student teaching, and we do employ student teachers.
Yeah, I mean, I-
That's a relatively new, new thing, but you can typically get paid to do your student teaching. Your last semester, you can get paid on the job training.
We talked about this one time before, and it's something I think we need to bring back up. We talked about building some apartments or condos or something for teachers that are out of school, giving them a reduced rate, something to attract them. Right now, housing in our areas is just not good. And I don't know where we'd get the money from or how we would do it, but I think it's something we really need to look at. And I think it's a way we can attract teachers right out of college, I really do.
I think, I think there's a lot of opportunity with that. I think in, in many, many avenues with teacher housing, location of teacher housing, funding for teacher housing, I think that's kind of that next step that, you know, helping them get out of school, but then once they're in the district, you know, there's a commitment of three years, for example, and you give them half off rent for property that we own, and maybe have a management company take care of it, so.
I, I was looking at the list of, for recommendation personnel. We have a lot, we hire a lot of people who are not from this country, and not just Dalton County, but all over the state. Do we have some mechanism in there to help them with a, with a barrier? A teaching barrier, if you will? Because our kids, some of them are struggling already, and some of them are not at grade level. And in my mind, that can create for you, for the, a bigger problem for them, in, in other words, trying to understand those instructors.
We do, as part of bringing the international teachers on, they have to go through the same certification that a, a citizen would, as far as the two parts of the practice. Then they have a third component, which is an English language proficiency exam that they must pass. It's an oral test that they have to pass in order to even be recommended. And I know the accents are pretty strong sometimes, but, and the good news is, the longer they stay with us, the more that improves. The longer, longer we can keep them, hold on to them, and allow them to stay and teach with us, that does improve. We try not to put the, the heaviest accents in the, in the lower grades, if we can help it, where those kids are more language sensitive. That's a good question, though.
And we do have people within the district. We've, we've got several folks that have taken our international teaching group kind of under their wings to try to help, you know, because they get here, they don't have a car, they don't have a place to live. I mean, literally, it's like they get off a plane and, and they got, so, so not only do they have to figure out, you know, lesson plans and how to teach our kids, they've got, so we've got folks that, that are in the district that actually take them under their wings, help them, but also help them with what you're talking about too, to make sure that they, that there's other people around them to help with the language piece, to help with the culture piece. Because the, you know, the reality is, is that everywhere in the country, I mean, there's not enough teachers in the U.S. Like, that, that's it, that's, it's just plain and simple. There's not enough teachers in the U.S. to accommodate the teaching positions. So you're going to have four teachers, to your point. Those that help them assimilate more into the classroom, especially from the language, they're better off.
Okay. All right, we'll move on, personnel actions?
Chairman, I will be receptive to personnel action, and there's an agenda that we have to deal with.
Second, second, discussion?
I have a quick one. But those people who, that, how it is listed in here, that they are pending a suitable replacement, when they signed their contracts, did they get the retention bonus? Because obviously, they've signed a contract, or these people did not sign a con, I mean, what's-
Right, so if they did not sign a contract with us, that they get bonus, that, that's not all this is. These are people who signed their contract with us, who are trying to get out of their contract to go to another district, they will not get the bonus.
So when is the bonus going to be distributed?
It already is.
So when, so how did they miss out getting?
So they-
If they signed the contract, didn't they get the bonus?
If, if they're new hires.
No, 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 I'm talking about these-
If they're leaving us, if they're leaving us.
Then we will recoup it before we pay them out.
Okay.
Just another, another.
Can we, can we, and as, and I've mentioned that to you before, I want us to keep a list of the number of employees that leave contract after having signed and having received, and, and checked off that they, that this bonus was recouped.
Oh, I'm having to keep that list, yeah.
Thank you, yeah, because I want, because I want an accounting of this, you know, at the end of the year.
Yeah. My payroll department and I are having to keep that list, so that's not a problem.
Okay, perfect.
We're very well aware of that list.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to assess personnel. All in favor? Oppose? Let us have it. Second session, entertaining motion. Executive session, interrogative motion?
Executive session.
For?
For the transfer of property matters.
Okay, we have a second, a second discussion. All in favor of the motion of going to exec, executive session to discuss personnel matters, recommendation termination, hires and or transfers and property matters. I like it. Oppose? Eyes have it.
Questionable, let's put it that way.
Okay.
Okay. Thelma made the motion to come out, executive session, and we second it. We're now back in open session. I'll entertain any motions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the board chairperson to execute an order on behalf of the board terminate the employee of a professional employee, terminating the employment of a professional employee of the district, such order having been reviewed by the board.
Second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? You're none all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
I oppose. I just have it, motion passes.
Yeah, but I will be adjourned.
Motion to adjourn, second, all in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.